I'd like to call this meeting to order. Matt, can you do roll call?
Yeah.
Take your time. I know I just sprung that on you and you just walked it. That's fine.
No, it's okay. It's my fault. So. And Rick, I think they wanted us, we had a communication that you had sent me about asking for last names.
Yeah.
So maybe some help.
Okay. Oh, Nicholas, yeah.
Tier arena.
Tier arena, yeah.
Mr. Weidemann?
Here.
Ms. Bax?
Here.
Chairman Pitzel?
Present.
Ms. Buckler?
Present.
Mr. Wu?
Here.
We switched up on you.
Katie?
Here.
And Mr. Callaway.
And yourself.
And Mr. Wigginton is here.
Okay, very well. First thing is the approval of the minutes from June 22, 2020. Should have all got those in communication, so if anybody has any changes or updates, if not, a motion would be in order to approve them.
Rick, you got a motion to approve minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Mike, second by Tessie. Any other discussion, changes, corrections? Okay. I guess call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Weidemann?
Aye.
Ms. Bax?
Aye.
Chairman Pitzel?
Aye.
Ms. Buckler?
Aye.
Mr. Katie?
Aye.
Mr. Wu?
Aye.
I vote aye. So a motion carries.
Okay. So one thing on the agenda that I noticed, so the second part, the site plan review, the last part that the commission deliberates and votes, this is the first reading of this site plan, so it'll just be a reading of the site plan and then questions and comments and all that sort of thing, and then next month we'll take up the vote of that, just like we've been doing, so. So the first variance request.
Glass is out. COVID has not helped my eyesight.
Variance application by William J. Andrews seeking a variance to permit construction of a corner yard fence with a setback variance on the property located at 1204 East Lake Avenue, Peoria Heights, Illinois. Property is currently zoned R2. So is Mr. Andrew here? Is that you? Do you want to step up to our podium there? We have your drawing that you sent us and pictures, so if you want to refer to this at all, but...
Do you have the most recent one? I think I sent an updated one.
I think this is not the most recent because it still has 30 feet, which you had changed to 24, I believe.
Correct, correct, yep.
So the, on this diagram, the distance from the house to Atlantic should read 24 instead of 30?
Three, 24.
Yep. Okay, so you want to tell us what you're trying to do and why and et cetera?
Yeah, the biggest thing is there's currently a friend of mine renting the home that has two large dogs. The backyard of the home is so narrow that it doesn't allow for pretty much any area for, to fence off for the pets. So since it's on a corner lot, the best area to do that would be on that corner that I laid out next to Atlantic. And the main reason again is because of the two dogs and one of them doesn't do very well on a leash.
And then the 20, so I was over there the other day, the 24-foot takes you about to the edge of that concrete slab.
Correct.
In the picture where the pool's sitting, where there's not a pool anymore, but there's a concrete slab there, so the 24 takes you pretty close to the edge of that concrete slab, correct?
Correct, yep.
Is it right in line with that concrete slab? Do you, so when I was over, the guy, your renter came out and he was like, "Oh, I think there's a stake here, but we couldn't really find where it was."
Yeah, I couldn't find it on that, on that side of the property, so I kind of assumed that that concrete slab would have gone to the end of the property line, and that aligns to the stake that I did find at the corner of Atlantic and Lake.
So you found the corner pin up here at Atlantic and Lake?
Correct.
So how far is that pin then located off of Atlantic?
I didn't measure that, but...
Well, would the fence be...
It's not going all the way to Atlantic, so...
Okay, so the fence would be entirely on your property?
Correct, correct, yeah. So the fence going towards Lake Street would end at the corner of the house.
Sure, but on the Atlantic side, it would be...
Oh, I'm sorry, on Atlantic. I thought you said Lake. It's 10 and 1/2 feet off of Atlantic.
And that's within the, where the pin is located?
Correct.
And then is it, so then is it that telephone pole then? Would that be outside of the fence?
It'd be on the street side of the fence, yeah.
Is that part of the reason why you adjusted it back?
Yeah, and the main reason was just finding the property line. I thought that the property line was closer to the street until I actually went and found it. That's why that first drawing was incorrect.
Okay.
So once I found the property line, then I realized the telephone pole's on the other side of the property line.
Sure.
And then also adjusted it to go just to the end of the driveway for the fence.
So I think somehow you're still going to have to find that pin on that side to make sure that that's really where it is.
Okay.
Because when I was over there, I was kind of eyeballing it. In the alley, there is a steel post. There was a cone on it.
Okay.
There wasn't a cone on it a month ago when I looked at it, but there's a steel post there and it's kind of just inside the, where the telephone, where your line, where you said your line was.
Yep.
And then I noticed that the fence in the yard down was in line with that post.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if that might not be the property line, but...
Sure.
I think you need to find your true property line on that side.
Yep, okay.
Is there any other questions, comments? And it's a four-foot fence.
Yeah, I'm planning on just doing a four-foot wood picket fence, so mostly, I think the code is 40% see-through.
Yep.
It'll be more than 40% see-through, is my plan.
And picket fence, you said?
Mm-hmm.
And it will be in line with the front of the house, not the front of the porch, right?
Correct.
This shows house, I just want to make sure.
Correct, yep.
Or like the side? Oh, in line with the front.
So where, where will the gates be? Will there, there's not really access from the house into that, right?
Yeah, I'm planning on having the gate next to the house on the driveway because there's a side door right there.
Okay.
So they can go out the side door and then just open that gate and access the fenced area.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns or anything other than that? Go through the findings of fact.
Hey, Rick, if he's got a pin, or if he's got a, you know, a ground pin, you've got, you found one.
Mm-hmm.
If you follow your property description, you should be able to find the other ones, right? I mean, as long as you follow...
Well, if you think about that, Matt, if you take a string and put it on that pin at the corner and run it back towards the alley or towards, you know, down the Atlantic side, I mean, you don't know how far it, does it, does it angle? Because sometimes the, you know what I mean? So you, I'm not sure, you may be able to find it if you look in line with that other post maybe, or in line with your driveway.
Yeah, and I was trying, had a metal detector, but I was digging around back there, so I might just have to give it a shot.
It's kind of hard because some of it's rock and some of it's asphalt, right?
Yeah, and I don't know when they did that, when they did that driveway, if it's now gone, I'm not too sure.
Right.
But if you think that, that pole in the alley is the other one, I can just run a string from the one I found all the way to that pole.
Well, again, I'm just guessing that that might be. I think you need to have somebody tell you for sure where your pin is, and if you can't find it, I don't think it'd be much to come out and...
Have you had any feedback from the neighbors, the sisters, anybody?
Not much. I've met the, I've met a couple of the sisters, and then the neighbor across the street on Atlantic, said that he called in and actually said a fence would be a good idea because of the dogs.
Okay.
I don't know who fielded that call, but...
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions or anything for me?
I was going to read. So Bob Hill is the person that lives across Atlantic on the other corner of Lake and Atlantic, so just to the west of his property, and he sent a note to the village saying, "Pass along to the zoning commission for pin number blah blah blah. I live next to this address and I have no issue with them putting up a fence. I suggest the fence be," he suggested the fence be chain-linked so that it would not obstruct other drivers, but I think as long as it's 40% open and four feet, it's not going to obstruct anything, so.
I drove past it too, and I thought it looked very reasonable.
So if there aren't any other questions, a motion, or no, I'm sorry, we need to go through the finding of fact. Any other questions of Mr. Andrew? If not, you can have some.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
So is there anybody in the audience to comment on this? Interested in commenting on this? Very good. Public comments are closed. So will the strict application of the terms of zoning code related to the use, construction, or alternation of buildings or structures, or the use of land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as convenience to the petitioners, but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrated hardship to the petitioner?
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 And then if proposed variance involves a fence, will the fence conform with the standards set forth at subsections D2, D2C of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 So then a motion would be in order to approve...
A motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conditions other than him finding his actual...
The line.
West property line?
Uh-uh.
Matt, call the roll.
Mr. Weidemann?
Yes.
Ms. Bax?
Yes.
Chairman Pitzel?
Yes.
Ms. Buckler?
Yes.
Mr. Katie?
Yes.
Mr. Wu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries.
Nice.
Okay, so as soon as you have your property line found in the new, any new diagram or whatever, get, then you can get with Sarah up here at the village and provide her the document showing the new, that somebody found your property line for you or whatever, and then she should be able to get you a fence permit.
Okay.
Okay.
Site plan review and variance application by PH Samuel LLC seeking approval of the site plan with variances for lot size, rear setback, and front yard fence for proposed residential development of the property located at 1324 East Samuel. Property is currently zoned R3.
Family residential district, multiple family residential district. So Katie, are you going to talk to us?
Also, guys, full disclosure, this is the house that I rent from Katie Kim, so that's my house.
Is there a house there?
No, this isn't your house. This is next to...
1324?
Yep.
Okay.
1324 is right next to the St. Jude House.
Okay.
Just the other side.
Okay.
Yep. Not your house, but full disclosure, she does rent from Katie Kim. So yeah, so this is, and I'm assuming, because I saw, you keep your mask on, I'll keep my mask on if you can't hear me, I'll try and talk more clear as well, and so...
So this has, this is 1322 and this is 1324, so this is the St. Jude House?
Yes. So what I did is originally we had the site surveyed by Moore &amp; Kerr, and then that's what we had submitted there, so I just wanted to kind of refresh that that is originally one parcel that was in our development, two and a half lots.
Right.
On there, so we already separated the St. Jude House out, so what was left was a lot and a half, and so that's what this parcel remaining is. So I put that in there just to kind of...
This is a 45-foot lot then?
It is a 45-foot lot.
Okay.
I realized as I was sitting back there, I do have a typo on that, on my addendum. The square foot is calculated correctly, but it is 40-foot wide versus 35, and normally I catch those things, but it's on, do, 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 on my addendum on the second page, when we talk about 10-7B-4 lot size, in the second bullet, it says, "Proposed home variance request for 5,625," and in parentheses, I put 35-foot wide lot versus 45, but the 5625 is the same square foot. It just, I got fat fingers, I typed. And you look at it so many times, it looks right, but the square footage itself is cracked. I just tried to put more detail in there, and I hit a four instead of a three, so I apologize. And I've looked it over probably about 20 times, but...
So I'm trying to find...
Does everybody see what she's saying?
I don't have it.
Yeah, I think it might be in the email.
I didn't put a PowerPoint together because I didn't know what we would have.
Nobody ran that addendum off for us. I was looking real quick.
Oh.
I have it on here, but I...
It's in the email, but not in the...
It's in the email, but I was looking for the paper copy and I don't have it.
I confirm everything in the addendum is correct, and I didn't even catch the 35.
I, I think every other place I have four, like the first, the beginning page, I have 45.
I was going to say, right on the first page, it says 35.
I know. I was like, I can't believe that. And sadly, I have other people proofread this because when you look at the same thing over and over, it comes true, but yeah. So if you want, I can start, I mean, I was just thinking high level go through or just basically...
Yeah, that's fine. Just walk through what you're doing, what you're trying to do, what the, and then as you get to the variances that you're requesting, we can go through that.
Go through that, okay. So yeah, similar, I think everybody knows our Samuel development and what we're looking to do. Originally, we were wanting to build our house on 1313 Samuel, but when it kind of came with the condo building and stuff, we switched, and so we're looking at, this would be, I don't know if this is a good or bad thing, but you see all the documents, this is our home, so like I said prior, is we're looking at this for our residents to live here as well, and so this would be occupied by myself, so representing PH Samuel LLC as well as myself and my husband, and we got the letter from the ownership group, they're all aware of what we're doing in accordance with that, and really went item by item in terms of the layout. You guys should have the site plan of how everything's laid out on the lot, and we'll go through those setbacks in a second, and then also the floor plan, the elevation. We're working two different designs for the roof right now. That's the con of designing your own house, is having too many options to look at, but what we're submitted is the maximum height, which is within code that we would want to go to as well. So parcel address is at 1324 Samuel, and that's on the south side of Samuel, just to the east of the St. Jude House right now, and so permitted use, it is a permitted use. We wouldn't need on the building height, we don't need any variance. Proposed home is 35 feet, and that's per the code, is not higher than 35 feet, and then the amended ordinance, we did all the math outlining there on those calculations, so that has no variance needed there. The lot size, based off of 10-7B-4, for the lot size code, shall not have a lot area not less than 6,000 square feet, so some of, with the whole development, we're really looking for that 30-foot by 125 parcel. That's exactly what we got for the St. Jude House. The St. Jude House is 30 by 125, give or take a couple inches and stuff, and so this one, because there's a remaining half lot right there now, we're just taking the rest of what's lot to keep the project going, so that is 30, or 45, I'm reading my misprint, 45 foot by 25 feet, by 125, which totals 5,625 square feet, so it is less than the 6,000 square feet, so we are asking for a variance of 375 square feet, which is less than what we asked for on the St. Jude House with the 30 by 125, and that's just honestly to keep it simple. We don't own the lot next to it, so not knowing if we would ever, we just decided that we're going to take the whole parcel as is and go there. The side yard, no variance on that. Front yard, no variance on that, the 25 feet. The rear yard, this is where, and I know sometimes we've met, it depends on how the garage, because it is attached by a walkway, if it is considered the principal structure, we would need a foot variance. If it's, if it's not, then we'd be good. The rear yard also has a second caveat that we looked at. If that foot is a huge deal, that, that distance is less than a lot of the garages along that alley back there, we could take it in if we needed a foot, not a big deal, but just when I ran the math, we came up a foot needing the variance for the rear yard.
It is connected, you're saying? It's a connected garage?
It's connected by a walkway.
And this lot would take over, so if I'm looking at the St. Jude Home, which I do all the time?
Yeah.
Is it the lot and then the house also, or just that little lot right next to the St. Jude Home?
It's the lot next to the St. Jude House before the, there's like a beautiful row of hostas there where the fence...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so it's, they staked it, so Kerr staked it...
That's what I see.
The day, yeah, we submitted this, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, those stake marks would be that lot that...
So that like empty lot right there?
Yep.
Okay, just triple checking.
Yep, yep.
And so when you say a walkway though, it's enclosed, it's got walls and a roof and...
Yeah, it's a hallway, basically. Pardon me?
It'll be HVAC heated and cooled?
Yes, it will be. And there will be a vent fan in there as well.
I'm checking that right now, but I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know if it is or not.
Well, it's, it's, the way it's written is like there's a second paragraph, but, so we would need the foot variance if we go with the tougher of how I read the restrictions, so it'd be a foot. And honestly, that breezeway is a hallway, and then on one side, it's a pantry, and the other side, it's, it's a hockey airing out equipment room because that stuff should never go in the house, but, but yeah, that's pretty much. So if we needed to take a foot out of that, we could do it. Ideally, that's what we want, so if it's a big deal, we can. We're still, from the back of the garage to the alley, 14-foot, we're just not the full 15, and if you look at that back alley, I mean, there's, I would tell you 1426, which we lived at previously, that's closer, I mean, John's house is closer.
So how far is the, how far is the back of the garage?
The back of the...
You're saying the back of the garage to the alley is 14?
The back of the garage, the back property line is 14 foot.
14, yep.
This is 15. It's still farther than a couple of the existing structures, but the code...
If it wasn't connected, you could be five feet.
Fine, yeah.
So they're connected and they're 14 feet, I think that's, I don't see it as a big deal.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I hope, I hope that's the case, but just with the tougher one and it is connected, there's a foot there.
Yeah, I don't really see anything that talks about it being connected in the code, but it does say a separate building, right? So it probably is.
Yeah.
I think that's the safer assumption.
Right.
Yeah, when it says like ancillary building, that's where I kind of get, it's a word thing on that one.
It's very similar to the St. Jude, but you had an open court.
Yeah, and we'll have an open court too.
It's going to be closed.
Mm-hmm, yeah, almost...
They have a breezeway.
Yeah, it's pretty much a breezeway, yeah. Used to put shoes and, I mean, coats and, like I said, yeah, yeah, mudroom. Then the lot coverage, no variance there, kind of did the math of the 45 by 125, 40% of that area of that, so we are less than the 2250 square foot, we're at 2145 square foot, so we're at 38.1% versus the 40, so no variance there. The habitable floor area, we got that, no variance. And then the fencing requirements, as we have on Samuel, we're requiring the lots that we developed to have the wrought iron fence in front, and as, just listening to the fence, you guys know we have to get a variance for anything, any fence, so it's the exact same one we have been proposed, proposing I should say, with that, which would have brick pillars at the entryway and then the wrought iron fence across and would connect.
So I'm not sure, is there a different picture than this that shows a fence? I don't...
Not in this booklet.
Is there a, is there one you sent in email?
The site should have the fence unless I... Um, the site should have the fence unless I... 'Cause I did a separate one for that. So if the site plan doesn't have the fence, I'll have to re-sign that. But it would come straight to, um, property line up front. And then the brick pillars would sit... Actually, it'd come back a foot off the property line so that the pillar could sit right at the property line.
So I see the squares on each side of the sidewalk, which would be the brick pillars, probably, and the dotted line going through there. But then, does it go around the whole property then?
No.
Or just across the front?
Just across the front right now.
Okay. So it won't even go back to the house? It'll just be across the front?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
So what's the purpose of the fences?
Just to have that streetscape. And if people want to enclose that front yard, they can. But to have that, like, walk, um, with the whole streetscape done.
And then they won't... They don't really... Or you wouldn't, I guess, for this house, have like a yard very much? Just that open... That little square?
Well, we would have, um, like, really all this area here...
Okay.
As grass area on there and to put it. So we'd have kind of more of a side yard. I'm throwing things, sorry.
You're fine. The side yard and then that little portion of the front?
Yeah. Yep.
Katie, one question I have. You... So in this packet as well, and I know in previous discussions about this, this Samuel in general...
Yep.
There's been a talk with this aesthetic fence, and I get the idea. And I know we want to have a united, uh, you know, front. So one of the things was lights on these brick pillars, yea or nay? But if that... If that's gonna be on a house-by-house basis, doesn't that defeat your goal of having a united kind of aesthetic?
So we didn't actually... We don't require them to have lights on the brick pillars, um, from the development standpoint. If they want to add that, they can. And so like the St. Jude House added that. Um, we have the wrought iron fence as a requirement and then the brick pillars as a requirement. But we really have kind of said... They were the first that kind of asked us that. We thought, again, with the streetlights and stuff like that, that we wouldn't really need it. But it's kind of a case-by-case. If somebody wants to add it, they can and not... But that's not something that we require on our end.
Hey, I live across from the house. It's really not that bad. It does help at night. Not that the... Not that our lights are bad overhead, but it does help. Um, it can be bright sometimes. It's truly, on my case, right across from the St. Jude House is not that bad with the lights.
Mm-huh. Isn't that honest? So we go back and forth? 'Cause I would rather put big planters on the top of them.
Yeah, I'd probably do a planter, but the light, like, I was like, ooh, that's bright. But then afterwards, I'm like, it's not that bad.
Mm-hmm.
And when you walk there at night, our lights... Our streetlights, um, they're very yellow. So these are... It's like a nice bright one.
Mm-hmm. And it has like that... It's kind of middle block, so the lights with the end, you know? Like you said, helps a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I grab these?
And I know that on one of our discussions on the previous... On the St. Jude House, we were talking about water retention and as well as where all this water is going. Same kind of deal right on this one as well, I assume?
Yeah, we would have the drain tile around the property, um, and then it would come and direct and tie into the storm and similar to what they do there.
And the improvements from Peoria Heights' standpoint on Samuel? What's the word on that?
So that's on our end. That's... I was on vacation last week, um, a little sanity before school started. So I owe Mark... We've been playing phone tag and it's mostly on my end. So to get back with him on that. But it's progressing, but we had a little bit of delay. And I would say more on our side than... Definitely more on our side than the village side.
But it's... It's in motion?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Philip's engineers involved and has drawn up, you know, preliminary...
That was the only... 'Cause I remember on previous projects, water on Samuel, I think even from your standpoint, Kim, you've talked about having water in your basement previously as well.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of the neighbors had that too. So I just wanted to make sure that, uh, any more development on this, which we've had a lot since we last got together on this, um, is addressing this issue for the neighbors.
Yeah, we've, um... When we bought the house from the seller, they said that their basement never got flooded. And they had a finished basement at the time. And I'm like, oh, my God, that's awesome. Because we had moved from 426, which is the Cape Cod Two Houses over that sits up on the hill, and we got water. So I was kind of like, wow, you're... What... I mean, 1430 is at the bottom of the hill. I mean, the only thing lower is the ravine that everything dumps into. So, I mean, we've had the whole entire street, my yard up five foot, has been flooded, 'cause the whole street's been flooded. I mean, we... We make sure those drains are not clogged. And if they are, uh, we call Tief. And he... Last time, he got people out there right away and we got little water. We didn't flood flood. But I will tell you, every time we have heavy rains, we flood 100%. And we've gotten... We've done intense gutters, 'cause the gutters weren't sized right on the house. And we've done like wicking away landscape-wise to kind of come through. But really, it's the fact that if the storm drains can't keep up, we flood. And we're probably the first person on that road flood, just with... Everything comes to us. And I did record some video, because I know Travers, um, came and got the lot across. But I mean, you can see all of Glen comes right down that hill, hits that drain, and all the leaves and everything with it come. And they actually clog that drain, which then, again, floods us. And the alley comes in and they did a fix, which is not really a fix. And they tended it a curve on the perpendicular alley. But that then comes right over that curb and comes right into our backyard. So we get it from the alley and we get it from the road. So believe me, there's nobody that wants the... That infrastructure more than me right now, 'cause every time it floods, we are hauling everything up.
So the... The infrastructure up at this end of the street, 'cause that's the other end of the street, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's a big hill in between. So the infrastructure at this end of the street is one that they're talking about?
We do it.
Right. And then the question though is, has there been any... Is there water problems on this end of the street? Has there been, like, the houses that were there? Did they have water? Did... Like the St. Jude House, has it experienced any issues?
I haven't heard about the St. Jude House.
Well, it doesn't have a basement either, right? So...
But it has a substantial crawl space. So it would get that water in that crawl space. But I've... I've asked, um, and, you know, kind of saying, hey, have you gotten anything? They have not, but they also have the proper, I would say, updated stuff. Sump pump, drainage tile, you know? All the things that help. But we have, um, 1336, which sits at the corner. It's the two-story at the corner on the southwest side of Columbus. It's cute, it has a white picket fence around the corner.
Yep.
Yeah. That gets water in the basement. And that's one of the highest spots on that street.
I get water in the basement sometimes, and my neighbor does as well. But my house isn't as bad as my neighbor's to my... If I'm in my house to the right. But I don't necessarily. It's not that bad on my house. And she's old.
Yeah.